Good evening, the school board meeting for May 23rd, 2017 is now in session. We would like to thank all of you who are in attendance with us in person or watching the meeting from another location for investing your time and energy to join us. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford.
Present.
Mr. Craig.
Present.
Mrs. Deskovich.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Here.
And Mr. Ziegler.
Here.
This evening, I would like to ask Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, to assist with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Reed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Blackburn the opportunity to recognize staff, students, or community members. Ms. Deskovich.
I get to start each week. I want to give a shout out to community member Hamilton Masonry. They volunteered to step in and remove the mural from the cafeteria wall at Melbourne High School and preserve it and re-put it back in after we do the reconstruction and remodel. And it's an important part of history. I don't know if you all have seen the wall, but my son went to school there last year. And we're happy to see that it's not going to cost us anything and that it's going to be salvaged. So, thank you to them. We all, I think, attended the Teacher Leadership Council. Maybe I'm stealing everybody's thunder by mentioning that one first.
Right ahead.
So, a shout out to Coach P, our, one of our state representatives who was the keynote speaker, and to all those that put that event together for all of our teachers that are, teachers that are in leadership. Is that the right way to say that properly? And last, the graduations that I attended, the adult education graduation, Palm Bay High, Satellite High, and West Shore. Congratulations to all of our 2017 graduates. It's been a great weekend.
Very good, thank you ma'am. Who'd like to go next? Mr. Craig.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. The, yes, Teacher Leadership Summit was actually really cool. That was, that was neat to see all the teachers of the year from the different schools together. And I thought Coach P's keynote speak, speech was, was really interesting. I mean, kind of gave everybody an idea of, of how to, how the whole process works, more behind the scenes than, than maybe some people understood. And he was open and transparent, and some of the questions that he fielded were quite interesting, his responses. So, I really appreciated him, him being there. Brevard Schools Foundation held their annual golf tournament last Monday. On Friday, they had their kickoff party and golf marathon, which I golfed in for them for, so I golfed 50 holes. And it was a lot of fun, great event as usual, but most importantly, Brevard Schools Foundation raised just a good amount of money for their scholarship programs. And I want to thank all the community partners that made that happen. It was, it was a great, great event as usual. And Janice Kershaw and the entire team at the Schools Foundation does an amazing amount of work behind the scenes to keep our, those programs going. Shout out to our, a resident of Cocoa Beach, DeeDee Sheffield. Spent a bit of time with her this morning, along with a, another group from facilities and a few other community members. But DeeDee really was one of the drivers of a, of a push to reinvigorate, for lack of a better word, the areas behind Cocoa Beach Junior/Senior High School and behind Roosevelt. There's a lot of land back there and a seawall. And we are looking at community partnerships and ways to make that more, a better resource for our students, for our schools, both Roosevelt and Cocoa Beach, and of course, a, a community piece as well. So, DeeDee was amazing. She put together a presentation and had done a bunch of research and brought a whole bunch of people together to get us moving, at least get us started. So, I really appreciate people like that that are active and taking a, a active role in their community. Also, graduations, fantastic. Virtual, Brevard Virtual Schools, always fun, do it here on a Saturday morning, Edgewood. And the Cocoa High graduation Friday night was phenomenal. Dr. Sullivan was up on the dais with us, and I think every student that, and I stood next to her, and I think every student that walked by hugged her. The, every student that spoke spent time thanking her for everything that she did there and, and the impact that she made on their lives. And it was very, very evident that her fingerprints and her handprints are on those kids' lives for the rest of their life, and definitely has made an impact in that community and at that school. And so, I, I thank her for everything she did there, and I appreciate it. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Mr. Ziegler.
I want to reach out and thank Congressman Bill Posey for hosting his annual Congressional Medal that he gives out to outstanding high school students in, for each high school in his district, which all the way runs down to Vero Beach also. That's a, it's an amazing event, and he's, it's, it's nice that other elected officials and other organizations, as we will even see tonight, do things for our students and recognize their efforts. So, thank you to Congressman Posey. And Mr. Craig, I didn't catch, did you play your 50 holes in your marathon?
I did. Played all 50 and actually played three extra.
Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure you, you did what you said you were going to do. Good job, thanks.
Mr. Susan.
Thank you. First, I wanted to say hi to Sean and his family out in the, in the crowd. He has been pushing the CPR issue that a lot of the, the people that I was trying to push to put in policy and everything else has been behind. His daughter who's with him, which he'll talk about later on during public comment, had gone down at Sun Bay Fitness, and we all know the story, how she wouldn't be here had somebody not responded. And he's wanted to come up and thank everybody for moving forward with that piece of legislation. Also, I want to say thanks to Ms. Flynn for joining the Planning Commission tonight that represents Rockledge. It's a big, a big step to representing your city. I want to represent, I wanted to say thank you to Pineapple Cove and Emma Jewell, because we're supporting those charters, and that's something we do in this county. And those are two amazing charters, and I'm, I'm proud to be able tonight to approve them. Spring, spring football's here. Vieira's playing Ridge Community. I lost to them when I was coaching Space Coast High School, and I've got a vested interest in watching Ridge go down tomorrow night. So, I'm going to be excited. I'll probably be traveling down there to watch the game and watch Vieira pound on Ridge for payback. I want to say thank you. There's a big agenda item that maybe not many of us are going to go over too much, and I wanted to take this time now. Our SROs, our cities throughout this, throughout this county fund our SROs almost two-thirds to the, to the amount that we pay. We pay $33,000, and the total cost is between $70,000 for a new one, and if they've been in, like the one in Merritt Island, almost $100 and something thousand dollars for the cost of those SROs. And those cities pick up the other end of that so that we can have SROs at each one of our schools. And for those of you guys that don't know what SROs, that's our security officers at every school. It's a phenomenal project where communities are working together. And I just wanted to say thank you to Titusville West Melbourne, Melbourne, Palm Bay, Satellite, Cocoa Beach, Cocoa, and Rockledge, and Sheriff Ivy for all of the, for all of their dedication to us. I want to say thank you to Judd for having the Home Builders and Contractors Association at his construction program the other day. He has a mad Polish guy that teaches it and is perfect for those kids. He has, he motivates them. They do some of the neatest projects inside there, and just hearing the HBCA lady talk to him, she was so excited, and thank you so much, Judd. I want to say thank you to Vieira and O'Gally High School for their graduations. One kid actually did a flip on Vieira's stage. I had never seen that before. And then the next guy came up and danced, and it was like, that was, that was like taking the not-so-good-looking girl to the prom. So, it was sitting there. And then, anyways, so that's what I have to say, and thank you very much. You like that?
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Dr. Blackburn.
That's going to be hard for me to follow, but I'm going to do my best. Shout out to Principal Liba at Sea Park and her entire faculty, staff, and community. Ms. Deskovich and I attended Odyssey of the Mind VIP performance last week, and it was absolutely phenomenal. Are they going to, their trip to Michigan this week?
They're there now.
They're there right now. So, they successfully fundraised the necessary resources in order to make that trip. I'm going to echo what, what many other board members said. I could really spend every day on the job going to high school graduation ceremonies. I can't go to enough of them. So, thank you. I was at Palm Bay, they're here, Edgewood, and, and Satellite Beach, Scorps, and just had a great time. In addition to thousands of, of children who earned their high school diploma, shout out to people like Eastern Florida, people in our schools, because last year, we had 342 of our graduates simultaneously earn AA degrees, many of you see them getting them at the ceremonies. This year, that number's up to 351 students that got an AA degree at the same time they received their high school diploma. And, and not only is it just a good thing to do, but that amounts to a cost savings to parents of $2.6 million worth of college credit that our families don't have to pay for, or students don't have to go into debt in order to get. So, that's just phenomenal. At the same time, last week, we received our third grade reading FSA scores, and after two years of pretty flat or stagnant scores, at 60% of our third graders being proficient, that number grew, five-point, single-year increase, and way above the state average, up to 65%. So, shout out to all the teachers and counselors and kids and families that made that happen. Wanted to say thank you. On Friday, May 19, 30 teachers, guidance counselors, social workers, and community partners met with the Student Services Division to work on frameworks and curriculum for social emotional support systems for next year. Many of them agreed to continue that work, so we're glad for that partnership. And congratulations, I don't see her here, the former Major Linda Moros, who's now Commander Linda Moros, and that's the great news. She will have her own precinct over in Cape Canaveral. The bad news is, it's not here, Brevard Public Schools. So, she gets promoted, and, and we get a chance to welcome Major Andrew Walters in that position. I know Dr. Mullins has already started some of that transitioning, so we look forward to welcoming Major Walters. And last but not least, shout out to the ET crew. Brevard Educational Technology Conference takes place at Vieira High School on May 26th in a few days. Come out, observe the dedication and excitement of Brevard's educators that Brevard's educators have for technology and innovation in their classroom. And I think that's it for my shout outs.
It's Major Morris's birthday.
Commander Moros.
Commander Morris.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. As several of the, the board members and Dr. Blackburn mentioned, we have been doing what I refer to as graduation palooza. This was a record year for me in attending graduations. I got to go to six graduations over four days, all of them absolutely amazing, and they all had their own special thing that just really made the, the opportunity stand out. But I do have to give a special shout out to Emma Jewell, which Mr. Susan mentioned as being approved tonight. I had the opportunity to attend their graduation this year for their eighth graders. Worked out, I was able to finish up Brevard Virtual and head over there to catch theirs, and I have to tell you, we had so much fun. They are small but mighty at that school, and I want to thank them for the opportunity to join them and for the, the awesome heart that went into their celebration of their students and all of the community coming together, as well as congratulate all of our other graduates as well. And I think important to mention, I'm sure you all have the exact same experience, every single one of the graduations that I attended, the students spoke about what an impact their teachers had on them. So, absolutely congratulate graduates, but I think we also need to take a minute to congratulate our teachers for the great work that they do that helped to get them there. Also had the opportunity to attend Lagoon Quest, which is one of our field trips that is supported by Brevard Schools Foundation for all of our fourth graders, and want to thank both the foundation and the amazing staff at Brevard Zoo for the great job that they do with the students. If you all haven't had the opportunity to do Lagoon Quest, you get to go out and play in the river and catch strange things and identify them and learn all about skulls and environmental preservation and, and great stuff. The best part of it is I spent, we were probably there for four or five hours, and I don't think there was a moment of that four or five hours that those students were not completely engaged in learning, which was awesome. So, many thanks to them for providing that opportunity. And then the last thing that I will mention, and Dr. Blackburn, you mentioned ET, and so they're going to get double kudos this evening. I think all of the board members got an email asking that ET be recognized for the superhero status for the district for the great job that they have done, specifically mentioning that the hard work of ET allowed us to cut down significantly on the number of days that we were in testing this year, significantly decreased the number of issues that we had with testing this year with their hard work, and really kind of gave them a pat on the back for thinking outside the box and figuring out ways to make not a great situation work out for the benefit of our teachers and our students. So, Mr. Cheatham, you and your team, thank you very much for all that you do. And that is it for me. So, I believe, Dr. Blackburn, that that brings us to the adoption of the agenda.
Mrs. Belford and members of the board, on tonight's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one recognition, 22 consent items, 10 action items, two information items, as well as one board discussion item. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations has been revised. Item F20 on Department of Juvenile Justice 2017/2018 school calendar was added to the consent agenda, and there were revisions to consent items. F16 on administrative and professional reappointment nominations for 2017/2018, and F19 on reappointment nominations of annual contract teachers for 2017/2018 school year. Items on design services for removal of ESF dome assembly and district school security design build services sales surtax were deleted from the consent agenda. There were revisions to action items G32 on department school initiated agreements and G38 on inter-institutional dual enrollment articulation agreement with Florida Institute of Technology.
What are the wishes of the board? Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Deskovich, seconded by Mr. Ziegler to approve the agenda, please vote. Any discussion? Please vote. And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
Yes. On tonight's agenda, there are 15 administrative staff members for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Craig to approve the administrative staff recommendations. Any discussion?
No ma'am.
Please vote. Dr. Blackburn.
Yes ma'am. Mrs. Belford and members of the board and our audience listening and here with us, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize Ms. Elaine Passanisi as she is retiring from her position as Principal of Palm Bay Elementary School effective June 2nd, 2017. And we want to thank her for her many years of dedicated service. Ms. Passanisi.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, board members and Dr. Blackburn. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. Tonight, I have with me many dear friends who I have all mentored over the years. I have my stepdaughter Kristin Nichols, who's the AP at Discovery, Laura and, Laura Glover and Janine Joese, who are the APs at Palm Bay Elementary. I have Millie Curtis, who is the AP at Westside Elementary, and her daughter Elle. Barbara Davis, who you all know is your district recruiter. Beth Evander, who is the principal at Discovery Elementary. Joanne Melville and Kelly Bishop, who are the guidance counselors at Palm Bay Elementary. And Bobby Tungus, who is a teacher leader at Westside Elementary, and his daughter Madison. So, they're all here to support my next stages in life for me, with me. So, I want to thank you for acknowledging my retirement tonight. I have had a very rewarding and successful career that spans 41 years in education. Thirty of those years have been here in Brevard Public Schools and 11 years in Massachusetts. My experiences included 24 years as a teacher and teacher leader, and 17 years as an administrator both at Westside Elementary and Palm Bay Elementary. My vision and mission has always been to provide the best educational opportunities for all children, and my decision-making always put the interest of children first. I also have taken very seriously my charge and mission to contribute to Brevard Public Schools succession plan by mentoring future teacher leaders and administrators, just as I was mentored by Mr. Donaldson, Dr. McIntyre, and Dr. Mullins. I feel I have served both missions with excellence as a standard, and now I am looking forward to starting a new chapter of R and R, which will include relaxing, reflections, and rejuvenation. Translated, that will be traveling, golfing, writing a book, and going back to my artistic roots. So, thank you.
Dr. Blackburn, will you please tell us about the recognition item?
Item B8 is to have the League of Women Voters of the Space Coast recognize three of our schools for projects submitted to the League's recycling awards program. Marcia Booth, Coordinator of the Recycling Program, will present the awards and make the introductions. Ms. Booth.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. The League is honored to have the opportunity to present the awards at the school board meeting. Thank you. I would like to thank Brevard Public Schools and Andy Ziegler, Pam Excoore, and Laura Candigo, and Everly for your support. Let me tell you a little bit about the recycling awards. The League of Women Voters of the Space Coast Recycling Awards Program started in 1997. The program in cooperation with Brevard Public Schools challenges students to create ways to further implement recycling and to educate others on the importance of recycling to our environment. With the goal of helping instill in our youngsters an appreciation to the, for the environment and the need to conserve our precious natural resources, the award recognizes three schools every year whose project best reflects their knowledge about and their experience with recycling. Six volunteer judges helped us this year select the, the awardees. From Brevard County Solid Waste Management Department was Andrea Holito and Wanda Scanz. From Brevard Public Schools, Anne Everly and Joseph, Joseph Montemorno, and from our league, members Hope and Larry Asher. Thank you for all your help. I would like to also thank all the schools that participated this year in the program. We had nine entries submitted, and we very might appreciate your efforts in learning and practicing recycling and your participation in our program. I would like to thank Lewis Carroll Elementary School and Stone Magnet Middle School for their projects that received honorable mention this year. Now, I would like to invite League's co-president Barbara Williams, League's immediate past co-president Fran Bear, Chairperson Belford, and Superintendent Dr. Blackburn to help me present the award. So, the elementary school selected this year was Freedom 7 Elementary. Please join me. And... They submitted two projects this year. One was second grade, from second grade, and the other one from fifth grade. Principal Zimmerman, project leader, was assistant principal, Ms. Mary Ellen King. And then the class, the second grade class was Ms. Faucone, Mrs. Huskins, and Ms. Rowland. For fifth grade, we had Mrs. Ho, Hoax, fifth grade led by students Morgan and Sienna. So, the total number, just second grade, was 51, 51 students participating in the project, and fifth grade, 64 students. So, it was a big group. Please, thank you. Congratulations. School. Principal Wybelt, project leader, Mrs. Jewbrand, and it was the classes seventh and eighth grades, and a total of five students participated in the project. The principal Kaminsky, project leader, Mrs. Chimalay Vitaleano, and it was a 10th grade student. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of the Space Coast, thank you again for the opportunity to recognize our award winners at this meeting, and we're looking forward to next year. So, to next year's innovative and inspirational projects from our amazing Brevard Public Schools students and teachers. Thank you.
And thank you to the League of Women Voters for all the work that you do with our students in recognizing their efforts around recycling. We appreciate it. All right, we are now at public comments. Pam, do we have speaker sheets? The maximum allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. Please be reminded that statements shall be directed to the board chairperson. No person may address or question board members individually. The board chairperson may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If an individual does not observe reasonable decorum, the board chairperson may request that individual leave the meeting. Please keep in mind that we often have children present and/or children viewing our board meetings, and we encourage an environment appropriate for their viewing. While no action will be taken tonight by the board on items raised in public discussion, board members may assist with connecting public speakers to district staff that can assist with concerns, respond in brief to comments made by speakers that require immediate clarification, request... clarification, request that response to specific speakers be placed on the school board's website under the section called "For the Record." These responses will take place at the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. I request that you speak into the microphone and state your name. We have five speakers this evening in this order: Anthony Clucci, Dan Bennett, Marcus Hockman, Sean Seema, and Martha Lopez Anderson. Mr. Clucci, if you would like to approach?
My name is Anthony Clucci. I'm the vice president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Recently, I read an article by Justin Minkel, a teacher in Arkansas. The article is called "Cracking the Teacher Recruitment and Retention Code." Minkel teaches in a school in which ninety-nine percent of the students live in poverty, and yet there's virtually zero teacher turnover. He starts off his article with a quiz. See if you can figure out which of the following are responsible for so many skilled teachers choosing to teach at Jones Elementary. Choice A: Hefty performance bonuses are tied to standardized test scores. B: It's a charter school, so it's more innovative than public schools. C: Salaries are high. D: Teachers are respected by the principals, superintendent, and one another. E: There is a culture of collaboration, innovation, and support. Here's the answer key: Not A, no performance bonuses here. Not B, we are innovative, but we are a traditional public school. Yes, C, our superintendent values talent and knows compensation matters. Despite forty percent of families in the district living in poverty, he has prioritized teacher salaries in the budget. Our district has the highest salaries in the state. Yes, D, teachers at my school know we are respected as professionals, which translates to a high degree of professional autonomy. Our opinion is sought on changes to school and district policies. Yes, E, our principal builds collaboration time into the school day in addition to our daily prep period. This collaboration is dynamic, purposeful, and teacher-driven. So you guys will notice that choices C, D, and E are all things that you, as a school board, can control if you want to crack the recruitment and retention code. I mean, I think we all know that Tallahassee's not going to help. Washington, DC is not going to help. I mean, don't hold your breath waiting for a wad of cash to come to pay for salaries. Don't think Tallahassee is going to support collaboration. They want us all competing with one another over bonuses. Support from Tallahassee, come on now. That's not coming either. Innovation, not from Tallahassee. They don't even think traditional public schools should decide on recess times for students. So I ask you, how are you doing on these three areas Minkel identifies? Will this board have the courage to truly prioritize salary increases, or will that money find its way to other areas? Will the expectation be that all teachers are supported with respect, or will that just be reserved for teachers at schools with excellent administrators? Will the board have the courage to agree to contract language that demands respect for teachers? Will this board enable teachers to lead, or will you continue to allow some administrators to use our valuation system as a means to micromanage? Will teachers have the freedom to choose their own professional development, or will it continue down the road of one-size-fits-all PD? So it's time to face the music. Tallahassee has decided to minimally support our traditional public schools while setting up roadblock after roadblock. However, there are things you can control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clucci. Mr. Bennett?
Good evening, Dr. Blackburn. Good evening, members of the board. I start with appreciation and congratulations to you and your professional organizations for coming out in favor of a veto for the state budget and calling for a veto of House Bill seventy-sixty-nine. I spoke about that at the last meeting. FEA was leading the charge in calling for a veto of the fits of legislation, and since then, your organizations represent school boards and superintendents have both come out against those, calling for the governor to call the legislature back for session to fix the budget, and calling for a veto of legislation. And Anthony was talking about some of that in his speech. So, good work, collaboration, we're working together on those important issues. I want to mention something else that's on your agenda this evening that's impacted by that legislation. It's Agenda Item F nineteen, and I don't suggest at all you pull it for discussion. I just wanted to go right on through as it should. And that's the reappointment of the annual contract teachers. It should go seamless. It's something that principals and assistant principals have come to expect, come to rely on, the fact that they can look at their effective, highly effective teachers this time of year and offer them employment for next year. It's not as simple as I just stated, though. It's something that we had to bring to the bargaining table for that to happen with that level of automatically happening, and something that we had to argue for at the bargaining table. We had to go back and forth and use the argument, can't we just do the right thing? And many years ago, in a different style of bargaining, it became, well, if we do this for you, what are you going to do for us? And it wasn't valued, or it wasn't, you know, the decision to put that in the contract. Wasn't necessarily weighed on, but it's the right thing to do. It was, we have to go back and forth and hackle it out and negotiate. Well, House Bill seventy-sixty-nine has a provision in it. It's the formerly defeated Senate Bill eight-fifty-six that would take it out of our purview to bargain the reappointment of annual contract teachers, which means that piece of contract language could be endangered if that bill is signed by the governor. I won't go through the numbers again. But if that's signed by the governor, our ACs are safe for now. You can certainly pass your agenda tonight, welcome them back. But unless something changes dramatically, we might have to renegotiate our contract without that piece of language, which I certainly don't want to do. We're going to look for every loophole in the law that we can. However, there's a simple solution. It's something that we've been bringing to you for years. And the solution is just do the right thing. It's the right thing to reappoint those teachers. It doesn't have to be in the BFT contract for y'all to do the right thing. The provisions of the contract that say if you're an effective or highly effective teacher, you'll work here again and you'll be reappointed before the school year is even out, you could put that in board policy. You could put that right into your practice. That way, we don't have to come to the table and horse swap it or look for loopholes in the law. We could just do the right thing and keep moving forward, keep doing right by our kids and our teachers in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Hockman?
May I begin?
Sure.
Good evening, board members, and Dr. Blackburn. The other day, I was reading a blog about teacher appreciation, which discussed how this teacher was frustrated with how teachers are treating and blaming state legislators for educational issues and funding they were experiencing. But at a point that I strongly disagreed with in the blog was giving a free pass to school boards such as yourselves. For too many years, we have been giving school boards a free pass. The normal one's responsibility of the school board is to represent their constituents, which are schools, students, communities, and parents. You are just not policymakers, but are our representatives. Teachers and others stop giving school board members a free pass and place expectations on them. Example of this lack of expectation was a recent article discussing vetoing the state budget, where the Brevard Public School Board Chair actually stated, maybe we're wishing on a star, but I think we have to do what we can do. My response to this comment is this: Our school board needs to change their mentality, stop wishing, and start expecting. Once again, will BPS have a community legislative... Some possible solutions to help build expectations are this: Well, once again, will BPS have a community legislative outreach? Here are my thoughts, use them or not. Community legislative outreach with parents through email, through superintendent meetings with the parents, video presentation through you, the school board members, and superintendent. Build up and use your PTOs and use them as a legislative outreach as active participants advocating for our schools. Outreach on special events such as the one thousand three hundred showed up for the Head Start program meeting at Brevard Zoo. That is thirteen hundred constituents you could impact with a legislative message. Next thing, community outreach with business partners and other community partners through semi-annual meetings with community partners, school board member outreach. Another thing would be school members have more flexibility in what they can say compared to district managers. Organize and strategize with business and real estate, community leaders, and local government officials. Legislative meeting with school board members, BFT leaders, and parent group leaders. Legislative meetings with congressional and senate leaderships on the federal government relating to ESA mandates and funding. A lobbying firm also must lobby on state and federal levels. I recommend having a workshop with our lobbying firm. Educate the public, not just legislators, on final legislative impact that it has on our schools, which would include federal and state. Now, do not get me wrong, this will be no easy task, but BPS needs to be politically active by collaborating with others, getting their constituents politically active. Before any of this can happen, our school members have to have the will to fight for our kids and our public schools.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Mr. Seema?
Thank you for this time to allow us to come and talk to you guys. I think you'll probably like what we have to say a little bit more than the recent stuff. I'm really nervous. But we just want to thank you. We're here to discuss CPR and AED implementation as a graduation policy for our schools, and I'm so thankful to have this opportunity to stand up and thank you guys for hearing us out. You know, I think maybe ten months ago, I emailed all the individual members of the school board, not knowing where to start, and I got an email back pretty quick from Ms. Henderson, and she got me set up with Rachel Winston, and from that time on, Mr. Susan, so many people, and I know there are so many behind-the-scenes people that have helped us push this through. And why this is so important is this young lady standing here beside me. This is my now-seventeen-year-old daughter, Lexi Seema. And about a year and a half ago, February second of two thousand and sixteen, my healthy barbarian of a daughter, she was, she's been a cheerleader since four years old. She's going to be starting her senior year this year on the varsity cheer team at Viera. She's been a basketball player, a volleyball player, a softball player. She should be a boxer. She's mean enough, you can ask her brother. But she went to Sun Bay Fitness like any other ordinary night and got on a treadmill and was running on a treadmill and fell over dead. I'm sorry to say it in front of you like that, but she was dead, and she, there was no warning. This was out of nowhere. My seemingly healthy, beautiful daughter was dead. Bill, please, I'm so afraid I might go over my turn, but please stand up. This gentleman, among three other, was three other people there that were in the gym that night. He was running behind Lexi at the gym, and he saw her go flying through the air. And because he'd had CPR training, because the three other individuals had CPR training, they jumped right on top of my daughter, and they figured out that something wasn't right. And they had somebody dial nine-one-one, they had somebody get an AED, and by the time EMS showed up twelve minutes later, she had a heartbeat and she was breathing. Twelve minutes. Can anyone hold their breath in here for twelve minutes? You can't do it. This is why this is so important. I must tell you also, I'm a medical provider. I've been a PA since nineteen ninety-nine, and the statistics that I learned for this disease, it astounded me. I was blown away. How we can have commercials about erectile dysfunction and, you know, Morgan and Morgan, and we're not talking about teaching people how to do a simple process of CPR that could save one thou... excuse me, a hundred thousand lives every single year in the United States. Only twenty percent of people know how to save a life in this country. Twenty percent. It's so simple. I can quote you statistics. I have somebody coming up behind me. She's sort of a mole. She's going to do more statistics for me. But I want to publicly thank Mr. Sick because he gave us our daughter back. Without their actions that night, I went to Viera High School graduation, and I saw people graduate. And the whole time, I was thinking that this is going to be my daughter, next year is going to walk across the stage. Because of that guy right there, I'm going to one day hopefully be able to go to my daughter's college graduation. Because of that guy right there, one day, I hope to walk my daughter down the aisle. Because of that guy, I want to hold my grandchildren one day. That is why this policy is so important. One hour, I'll tell you now, and some of you may internally roll your eyes, but this is your legacy. I don't care how many schools you build. I don't care how many teachers you hire. I don't care how many kids you have get into Princeton. One day, ten years from now, I hope and I pray that somebody will come to you and say, "Thank you, Mr. Blackburn, for signing that policy." Because you signed that policy, Junior knew how to jump on top of me and do chest compressions and save my life because of you all. I don't care if Coco wins five state championships. You let one of those coaches or one of those kids' parents die. If you were at home, and eighty-eight percent of these deaths happen at home, it's a travesty of how people die. If you were at home and you have a pool, and you looked in your pool, and you saw your loved one in the bottom of that pool, or if you saw your loved one in a burning house fire, would you dial nine-one-one and stand there with the phone in your hand and wait? Twelve minutes. It's not an assault on our EMS system. They're running up and down the roads all day, every day. We have to take this into our own hands, and I'm so grateful and thankful that you guys are considering this and that you're taking it serious, because it is such an easy process to make such a huge, huge difference. And as a family, we're so thankful. And I know I went way over. I've been looking at red for a while.
Thank you both for joining us this evening. All right, Martha Lopez Anderson.
Good evening, school board members. Martha Lopez Anderson, I'm the executive director of Parent Heart Watch, a national nonprofit organization focused on the prevention of sudden cardiac arrest and death in youth. And so, the topic that Sean Seema just talked about, the importance of really arming the generations to come with life-saving skills. Life-saving skills, just an hour of high school to learn how to save a life, how to do hands-only CPR, and how to utilize an automated external defibrillator or an AED. I'll tell you how important this is. As the executive director of Parent Heart Watch, unfortunately, I get to meet and speak to too many families where the outcome was not a good one, and I'm one of those. My son was only ten years old, the picture of health when he collapsed in cardiac arrest. And unfortunately, those life-saving skills were not very quickly available to him. And so, I cannot stress enough, let me give you just a couple of the stats. Every year in our country, according to the American Heart Association, over three-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand people suffer sudden cardiac arrest. Some have underlying heart conditions, some it's an acquired condition, and others it's simply by a blunt blow to the chest, also known as commotional cordis. Of those three-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-plus people that die, ninety-five-hundred of them are children. Children that appear like the picture of health. And then another stat, most of cases of sudden cardiac arrest happen on school property. As a matter of fact, it is the leading cause of death on school property. And so, not only arming our kids now that are going to be on school property that may turn around and save your own life, but they can, they will go out into the community as citizens and help save other lives. I cannot tell you the importance of doing this. We know CPR and AEDs work, but unfortunately, our survival rates have remained stagnant for over thirty years. And so, this is why I'm here to really urge you to please, 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 give these students the skills that they need to save a life, that they will take with them wherever they go. Kids, unlike adults, don't have preconceived ideas, and so they are not afraid to take action. They're not afraid to start pumping, you know, on someone's chest and to grab an AED and utilize it. So, thank you so much for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you very much. The board wishes to thank this evening's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is very much appreciated. Mr. Ziegler.
I would like to correct what may be a misperception presented by one of the speakers. Unfortunately, he left after dictating to us what we should do legislatively. Instead of asking, we want to let the community know this board and the superintendent and staff are extremely active in working with our legislators and advocating for what's in the benefit of our district, and for advocating for more funding. So, the accusations, it'd be nice if he would have asked. Those things are all done on a regular basis, and you should be proud of what this district and our staff has actually accomplished this year in relationships. And I believe, was it a half a million in funding for our career programs was scored as part of that process also. So, great things happening, and we are definitely on top of that. I don't like when speakers give misperceptions, because then they're archived in video forever and ever and ever, and some people think that's gospel. So, I just want to take the opportunity to correct that and thank the board for all their efforts this year. It was definitely a stellar year, despite we're not happy with the state's budget, but it really was a great year, and everybody worked well together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Mr. Susan?
Sean, can you come by and give us an inspirational speech about every other board meeting for us? That was awesome, man. Thank you. That's all.
I would also like to thank Mr. Seema and the rest of the Seema family, as well as Ms. Lopez Anderson for joining us this evening. I'm a drowning prevention advocate, so I preach CPR, first aid, AED, nonstop everywhere I go, and really, your work only helps my mission in the long run as well, because the more kids that we have prepared to respond, the better. So, eventually, they're going to be parents and may find themselves in that tragic situation with children in the pool. So, I appreciate all you're doing.
Mr. Craig?
And I'll add my thanks as well. I've seen you present at the, I think it was the Winter Girls Lacrosse Evolution. It was great, made a huge impact on our lacrosse, girls lacrosse coaches that day. I've been to a few of the Shack meetings where we've discussed this, and you're right, Ms. Winston has taken the ball and ran with it, so we're very excited and thank you all for advocating and sharing your story, because it means a lot when we have that inspiration and can see what it can do. So, thank you for taking the time to be here.
Okay, that moves us into the consent agenda. Dr. Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am. Before I do that, I'd be remiss if I didn't echo the same sentiments. A lot of people don't know this, but several years ago, my family and I were at Busch Gardens, and my oldest son passed out. It was heat exhaustion. He was only out for like 10 seconds, but it seemed like 10 hours to me. And so, standing there and watching that happen was just worse 10 seconds I've spent in life so far. Fortunately, there was a happy ending, but thank you for bringing light to this and helping us to push it. There are 22 agenda items under this category, two with prior information.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. Does any board member wish to pull any items? Mr. Susan?
I'd like to pull F-10 and G-33.
G will be an action item, so I'll take a call for discussion on that. So Pam, if you would, please pull F-10. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items, with the exception of the items that were pulled for discussion.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Craig.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Susan to accept the consent items, with the exception of the items that were pulled for discussion. Please vote.
Can you tell me who made the motions again?
Mr. Craig made the motion, Mr. Susan seconded. All right, that brings us to F-10. Need a motion?
Motion to discuss.
Need a motion on F-10?
Motion to approve.
What's that?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Craig. Open for discussion. Mr. Susan, your motion?
What I'd like to do is, I looked at the minutes for our board retreat and just wanted to add something that was kind of misstated inside the minutes near the end. It put inside there that we were looking for the $2, how much of the $2 we got from the Erbsloosberg Act, and I just wanted to add that I wanted to see how much money we had seen over the last five years and where the expenditures had gone for that. That was all, just to add that to the minutes. And I want to say thank you, Ms. Escobar, for doing a great job on all of our minutes. Now it needs a second.
No, you have a second. Ms. Escobar, did you get the verbiage Mr. Susan was referring to there?
Yes.
So, we need a motion to approve the amended minutes as requested by Mr. Susan.
I move to approve the amended minutes as suggested by Mr. Susan.
Moved by Ms. Eskovic.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Craig to approve the amended minutes as requested per Mr. Susan. Need a voice vote, Pam? And the motion passes 5-0. Okay, we will move on to the action agenda. Dr. Blackburn?
There are 10 items for your consideration. The first one is item G-32 on department-school-initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Ziegler to approve item G-32 on the action agenda. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn?
The next one is item G-33 on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Craig to approve item G-33 on the action agenda. Any discussion? Mr. Susan?
I was wondering if Mr. Langendorf's in the back, if he can come to the podium real quick, just for some clarification. I'm speaking specific to RFP 17-P-064-DR. Thanks, Mark, for coming up. Just wanted to verify that this RFP inside of it states that our supplemental contractor provider is not allowed to give any commissions in any way to any other vendors for doing business with us.
This contract itself, no, but we have an agreement with our consultant and broker of record that they cannot accept any commissions whatsoever.
Correct.
So, this agreement wouldn't have that language in it, but it's specific to our contract with Willis Powers Watson.
It is the intent of the board and all of our insurance documents to not allow individual vendors to be, have to pay towards other groups for doing business with us. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And if that was the case, that somebody was paying, was being forced to pay another vendor, we have the right to break their contract.
Sure. That would be a violation of our broker-of-record and consultant contract.
So, if Aflac was paying somebody else, we could break it within 30 days and break their contract?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted that clarification.
Very good. Any further, any further discussion?
No.
Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn?
We move on to item G-34 on job description for principal-alternative schools.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Craig, seconded by Ms. Eskovic. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn?
Item G-35 is on job description, assistant director of leading and learning.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Craig. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn?
Item G-36 is a job description paralegal.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Eskovic, seconded by Mr. Susan. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn?
Item G-37 is on the inter-institutional dual enrollment articulation agreement with Eastern Florida State College.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn?
Next, we have item G-38 is on the inter-institutional dual enrollment articulation agreement with Florida Institute of Technology.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Ziegler?
There's no cost associated with this.
I'm getting the high sign from the back, there's no cost.
Okay, unlike Eastern Florida State Colleges, that means that, that means, I assume that Florida Tech has the ability to enter into a different agreement than dictated by the state since their private school.
Dr. Sullivan is approaching the podium, so she can provide us some clarity on that issue?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, it's $100.
Making a point.
Mr. Ziegler, you are right on track. Our agreement with Eastern Florida State College through state law and FT units is paid for by the district. Our agreement with Florida Tech as a private institution is agreement for them to enroll our students in either their junior and senior year at a cost of $100 versus $1,200 to the parent.
Or the student.
To the, to the parent?
Yes, sir.
Student.
Or the student, correct, yes, but paid for by the parent.
But in Eastern Florida State College, we pay for it.
Correct.
Okay, I got the difference. All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any additional discussion?
No.
Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn?
Item G-39 is the approval of Emma Jewell Charter Academy contract.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn?
Item G-40 is to recommend the approval of Pineapple Cove Classical Academy at West Melbourne Charter.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Craig. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn?
Last on the action agenda is item G-41, which is on adult education fees for 2017, 2018.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Motion passes 5-0. We will move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review and will be brought back for action in a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight. Dr. Blackburn?
Mrs. Belfer, there are two items under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss the information items? Very good. There are no staff reports. We are now at the board member reports and discussion points section. In addition to discussion points, I request that board members please include any information requests to be placed on board assigned tasks during this time as well. Need discussion points from board members? Okay, I do have one item. I would like for us to discuss our FSBA membership, which has come up for renewal. The cost, $21,766 is for five board members through June 30th, 2018. However, if a board member does not wish to join, we can divide the total amount by five and deduct that portion from the invoiced amount. Would like input from our board members. Ms. Eskovic?
I should have come a little more prepared with the state statute. That actually says that they're supposed to bill us now separately and individually so that we don't have to divide and pull somebody out. But aside from that, I would like to remove myself from that fee and forego spending that money on my membership, please.
Okay, very good. Mr. Craig? Stick him with FSBA?
Yeah.
Mr. Ziegler?
Yes.
Mr. Susan? Clarity, Pam? We good? Very good. Okay, Dr. Blackburn, do you have anything else you would like to report? I'm sorry.
I forgot to jump in during the board members. Can I reverse that, or am I done?
You're done, Mr. Susan.
Anybody else would be okay.
What would you like to say, sir?
There's two things that I really just had that I wanted to talk about real fast. One, there's a, the county, I wanted to let everybody know, is writing a grant to receive money for our BLAST programs, and they're doing it so that greenhouses get put at each one of the BLAST sites. They're going to grow mangroves and seagrass that will then go into the Indian River to replace. No cost to the district, no future need like, hey, do this, and then you're going to have to sustain jobs or anything like that. I just wanted to let you guys know, there's an individual named Diane Campbell, who's amazing, who I taught with years ago, that runs the BLAST program at Cocoa, that is probably going to be the focal point, because she grows, I mean, she has her own little, I think you've been out there, her own little gardens and stuff like that. So, that was the first thing. The second thing that I wanted to talk about is, is something came to light with Eastern Florida. We have a growing need for teachers eventually because of the retiring status in a couple of years. The Department of Education trends are showing that there's going to be a massive amount of retirement, so we're going to have to be looking for new teachers. They have applied for their own four-year college education courses through the Department of Education and were blocked by UCF. UCF stated that they no longer, that we don't need here in Brevard, and there's not enough of a need for them to have a four-year program. That was not taken over very well at Eastern Florida State, and now they're going to go ahead and reapply. I just wanted to let you guys know that UCF is blocking, because where that ends up being a problem for us is that students that go to school here, take their like core, you know, AA courses here, then travel to Orange County. So, you may have hundreds of students that go over to Orange County to become educators because they can't do it here. They then are taught those disciplinary policies, those, every one of their evaluations, and they intern over there, and they're plucked, the best student or teachers go to work at UCF. I feel this is really unfair. That's all. And I just wanted to kind of let you guys know that that was going on and that they're going to reapply. That's all. If you guys had any questions, I could tell you more about it.
Very good.
Thank you for letting me reverse that.
No problem, Mr. Susan. All right, Dr. Blackburn, do you have anything else you would like to report in your superintendent's report? Did you want to discuss the calendar?
Yes, ma'am, I do have an update for the board and the community. Thanks for the reminder. As the board knows, and some of our audience members, back on January 24th, the board approved the calendar for school year 1718. In it, it included our spring break dates, which are April 2nd through the 6th next school year. Subsequent to our January 24th board meeting, as we got closer to this year's spring break, I think we all started to receive comments from staff and committee about the lateness of our spring break. We did extensive research, found that this year, we were one of, I believe, eight school districts of the 67 that had a late spring break. Next year, if we change nothing, we will be one of three school districts that have the late spring break. So, we did bring the internal team back together to revisit the dates. We actually sent a survey out to the community to revisit the dates. North of 2,000 people responded to the survey. It ended up with 44% of the respondents preferring to stick with the April 2nd through the 6th, with the other two getting a split vote, so to speak. So, with that in So, with that information and also with our spring break as is being voted on and approved back on January 24, I know internal staff has started making plans based on that, families, communities have started making plans based on that. Even if the data pointed someplace else, I think we would be hard pressed at this juncture to change it. So, just kind of announcing, updating that I won't be bringing a recommendation forward at this time to change where the Board approved back on 1/24. And we'll work on getting lots of communication out there on this.
Mr. Susan?
And I, I agree with the sentiments as far as us being down the road, pretty far on this, to making the change, but I wanted to bring some facts to light. Out of those three schools that we, or three school boards, it's us, Hillsborough, and Orange County. Hillsborough's ranked number 16th on that niche, and Orange County's number 28th. So, the top five districts as far as achievement, we're the only ones that are in April. I was on board with research showing about testing, but obviously, the move from less districts going from, you know, eight down to three, it's showing that the actual numbers for testing don't make up for the fact that our teachers have, they were dealing with a lot of discipline problems. One of the indicators that I would like to look at for next year is the amount of absences that we see in March because of, if we had the break in March, the spring break, we would see them not taking off as much time because of just that long drawn out. The other thing that I would say is that a lot of them had, a lot of the teachers and principals had moved towards a, they had said that a lot of the discipline problems that they had had were because it was just such a long time period before the kids got a break. I also just wanted to say that the other two dates were in March. So, if you asked the teachers, I would bet that 80% of your teachers would say that they would rather have spring break in March as opposed to April. I understand that the community wants to just keep it the same, and that's why a lot of the 44% of the vote is. But if you said to the principals and the teachers, what one would you rather want, I promise you that they would say inwards of 80% that they wanted it in March. So, I know that the people of the Board probably want to move forward and get this done, but I wanted to bring up these facts because I think that there's something to take a look at for the future.
Can I clarify one point just to make sure that we are looking at the correct information going forward? Mr. Susan, you said you wanted to look at absences in March. Are you talking about staff-teacher absences, or are you talking about student absences?
Student absences can be tracked, and it's one of our strategic goals, is to reduce the amount of absences because the higher rate of absences moves towards expulsion rates and suspension rate, or, I'm sorry, the dropout rates. So, I would say that that type of, just knowing from when I was in high school, the longer year without a break, kids start cutting. Plus, they start putting their beach shorts on around March, right? So, the rope swing and everything else starts looking good. When that stuff starts happening, we start losing the kids, we start doing that kind of stuff.
I just wanted to clarify what information you were requesting that we look at.
Thank you.
Any other Board members have comments on the issue? Mr. Craig?
I'll just step in, only because I know that there was some discussion about the testing issue, and again, I'm adamantly against us driving our calendar around testing. And this year, that was used as a reason, and I know that, I know my, one of my students tested Monday morning at 8:45 the day after spring break ended, which was very difficult. And it was not a desirable outcome, but it was because of where we put it. Now, if we, Ms. Duskovich just showed me her calendar looking forward. 2018 Easter is April 21, so I don't think it will be even in our discussion at that point because that is obviously way, way, way late. And so, hopefully, there is a, you know, we take the testing piece and we look at it from a throughput standpoint, but not, and we make sure that we mitigate the best we can, but the number one thing has to be for our students, they can't be driven by the throughput numbers and what's best for, how do we get through the testing as short a time as possible when we're then forced into testing the day after they come back from a break? So, hopefully, we don't do that again.
I'll come to you momentarily, Mr. Susan. I just want to comment on Mr. Craig's comments. I did share very similar sentiment with Dr. Blackburn, just for the public's knowledge, and I think he and staff are working diligently to minimize those testing dates right around spring break. I had shared some concerns that, you know, even trying to review prior to spring break the last two or three days before spring break probably wasn't very effective because everyone was in spring break mode mentally. And then coming back, it takes kids a little while to get in the groove. First day back probably isn't the best day, so I think Dr. Blackburn has been working with the leading and learning staff to see what we can do, given the date that we have already approved for next year, to try to look at our testing dates and ensure that we don't have a repeat of that situation. Ideally, I would have loved to have changed it for next year because I agree with you, Mr. Susan, I believe most people would rather have it in March, but I also understand that we're pretty late in the year at this point, and people have made plans and that sort of thing. So, my request to Dr. Blackburn was, let's deal with what we have now to the best of our ability, minimizing negative impact, but most definitely, when we look at working out our next calendar, we want to probably look at making a change there, so.
Mr. Susan, you had comment?
The only other thing is, is that the AP testing window gets stacked when we go further back in, especially when we put it on where we did. So, you'll have kids that have two AP tests in one day, and they can't take both of them. So, they have to make them up three weeks later. So, after they graduate, they'll be making up these AP tests because of the fact that we dropped it here. It makes it kind of difficult on those pieces, too. That's all. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for your perspective on that, Ms. Duskovich.
If the bill gets signed by the Governor, all the FSA testing will move to the last three or four weeks of the year, and that's going to alleviate that problem anyway, right? Not the AP testing, but the FSA testing?
Potentially, yes.
Potentially, yes.
Any additional discussion? Dr. Blackburn, anything else you'd like to share?
No, ma'am.
There being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned. Have a great evening.